Good evening. It is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. In attendance, Chairman Russ Fox, myself, Vice Chairman Doug Mogulyn. Joe Didi will be joining us shortly. We also have DPW Director Randy Brown and CAO Carl Steinhardt. Let me begin by reading the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law Chapter 3818, in the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at Town Hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately assess the proceedings as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we'll post a recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. And with that, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go kind of quick tonight because Mr. Mogulyn is gonna be assisting another board a little later on, so we're gonna try to finish up all our work. So Doug, again, thank you very much for all the extra effort you have been putting in with this board and all the other boards to help them with the Zoom conferencing.
No worries.
All right, first thing, COVID-19 discussion and actions. Mr. Steinhardt?
It was a, I sat in on a conference call with the Mass Municipal Association today. Along other guests there were the Lieutenant Governor, the Division of Local Services, the Department of Public Health in MEMA. And some of the more recent things that they just talked about, based upon Governor's discussion yesterday, was that the non, some of the non-essential retail businesses that have back roam operations for online and mail order functions being allowed to be brought on. It's gonna have to happen under a special staffing formula, the number of square feet so that they can keep people away from each other. They're not gonna permit any curbside sales, and they're not gonna be open to the public at this time. They felt that this was one of the ways that they could make accommodations to them because the other businesses that were essential businesses doing the same thing have been selling non-essential items too. So this is gonna be part of the eventual rollout that the committee that the Governor put together with the Lieutenant Governor heading it is producing a report on May 18th. And that's gonna be how things are gonna be rolled back in, and some things will go quicker than others. And it's not gonna be all at once, and some parts, you know, may still be out for quite a while. But that is the process. It's a committee that's made up of public officials, local government people, healthcare people, business sector people, service people. It's a huge crowd representation. They're meeting every single day of the week. They're charged by the Governor. So that issue is underway right now, and I believe also floor have included because of the upcoming Mother's Day. We can't forget how important that day is. So that's my update as of today's conference calls.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda I have is the Board of Health enacted a policies and procedures for wearing face masks or face coverings that took effect Saturday, May 2nd. I believe there was a Code Red call that went out, and the Board of Health has been notifying businesses. And the good Governor has also enacted a face mask, face coverings that will take effect tomorrow, May 6th, for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Is that correct, Mr. Steinhardt?
Yes, both of the orders have been sent to our department heads to share with their staff because that'll be something that everybody needs to make sure they follow in part of our action on complying with that and our sort of getting back to businesses using the social distancing, using the Plexiglas barriers, still making sure that meetings are held remotely or through webinars in reducing, obviously, the amount of face-to-face contact. And, you know, Randy, your office, that Christie had, had some nice floor medallions, those stickers?
Yeah, if you like.
Did Chris, who got those? Did Chris get those for her?
We bought those through Lawson.
Okay, 'cause I'd like to have about another two dozen more of those.
Couple dozen? Okay.
You know, so that would be very helpful because we're gonna wanna put them in other locations through our municipal buildings. Now, do you have them in your garage there for the future?
We have some, we have some on our floors in the garage. We have.
That's all I'm saying. I wanna make sure you've got them there too, and.
Our facilities are covered, but I can, I can talk to you tomorrow and get you some information on how to order those.
Okay, and I also made sure that Bob Johnson included your building for the Plexiglas barriers too?
Just Christie's office has a Plexiglas barrier.
Yeah, well, I just wanna know, we may wanna include the garage if there's any public interactions coming through your door. So we're amenable to doing that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure you guys are treated the same.
Yep, I appreciate that.
So those things are happening, so that's good.
All right, the next thing I have is a vote to accept the CARES Act grant of $8,972. And this is, we're receiving this through the Fire Department, Carl?
Yes, it was part of a $30 billion appropriation and being sent to different states. And this is a share of it for our community, and it's related for our potential lost income and burdens placed on our EMS agency for COVID responses.
Okay, so I need a vote to accept this grant?
Doug Mogulyn will make that motion.
Your second? All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Mogulyn, yes.
Joe Didi, yes.
All right, unanimous. Next thing is the fiscal 21 transfer station sticker fees. I believe we all agreed to a three-year plan, I think. Randy, did we increase it 10% last year?
That's correct. Last year, rates went up 10%.
Is there a motion to, we agreed on a three-year plan, but I don't think, I don't believe we said 10, 10, 10, but would somebody like to make a motion for another 10% increase?
You do have the context of why you're doing it. Is the $65,000 increase fees from the trash people?
Absolutely, but Randy could go into more detail, but obviously, because of the recycling, our costs are gonna dramatically increase at the transfer facility. We already agreed to an increase, a three-year plan to continue the increase so people wouldn't get hit up with one big lump sum, but it would be a gradual increase. So with that, discussion or a motion?
I'll put forth the motion for a 10% increase. I also wanna ask Randy to let the guys at the station know to, to make sure that they're stepping up the, not enforcement of stickers right now. I know we've been kind of watching that and being a little bit flexible with that with people doing, you know, trying to help their neighbors and whatever else. But I wanna keep a closer eye on people that shouldn't be at the transfer station, period. You know, commercial users, out of state, you name it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We could just send out the, you know, probably the annual note or, you know, sometime have a group meeting and just kind of step that up again, because I think we're falling back a little bit on that. But I'll make the motion for the 10%.
Doug Mogulyn made a motion. I need a second.
Joe Didi, second.
Okay, roll call vote. Russ Fox, yes.
Doug Mogulyn, yes.
Joe Didi, yes.
Okay.
Randy, I didn't mean to cut you off, so please, if you want.
I just wanted to comment. We do have some commercial users that, you know, it's hard to tell someone that, you know, you have to buy a different vehicle to use a facility when your primary mode of, of, of vehicle is, you know, through your, through your commercial truck.
Well understood.
Not to say that, well, there are people that try to get away with it, but, you know, we do have some commercial users that have a valid sticker. And same thing for out-of-state stickers. We have people that live in town, but they have a company-issued vehicle out of Connecticut.
Right, Connecticut plates, that is correct.
Primary vote mode of transportation, so.
Gotcha.
We do, we do try to catch those people, you know, but yeah, that, there, there are a handful of people that do, that are using a facility properly with those vehicles.
Cool, thank you.
I don't think that was the case, Randy, and I agree with you. I actually got a call Monday from a gentleman that was dropping stuff off, I think, Saturday. Commercial plates, landscaper in town, dropping his personal trash. Some old timer, nothing against you, Russ, was out taking pictures of his vehicle because it had landscaping on the side. You know, commercial use, it's not. He's, he has a commercial vehicle dropping his personal trash. I think what Doug was nicely saying is, and I've seen it a few times in the past in my younger years, is there are blatant people that are there with commercial trash. You know what I mean? And we catch most of them, but, you know, every once in a while, you definitely see them sneak through there.
Yeah, we're pushing through an increase here, and, you know, we know that the recycling fees are going up. The tipping fees have gone up too. So, you know, we're, we're carrying a lot of that on the tax rate. We realize that we need to do that. It's a health issue, but we also don't need to subsidize that even, you know, more than we already are.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mogulyn. Thank you, Sonny. Next thing, uh, next thing, the LPVAC diesel and gasoline fuel bids, Mr. Steinhardt?
Yeah, we, the board has the package of information. They've gone out for three-year contracts on behalf of all the municipalities where they take everybody's gallonage that they're estimated to use per year, and they aggregate that, and then they go up to bid on our behalf for three years. And we're hoping under the present climate, with the way the commodities have been trading, that we can get a very aggressive price. And so that bid opening is going to be on May 13th, so I would like to have the board authorize the Chair and myself to award it to the person that the LPVAC determines to be the lowest responsible bidder on our behalf and enter into agreements for those quantities.
Well, I feel like a teenager. Gas is a dollar and a quarter, and I'm grounded, but I'll make that motion.
Both fuel types.
I need a second?
And he was probably playing with the computer back then too. Joe Didi, second.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
All right, thank you. Next thing, the letter that we got from the Town of Granville concerning Sodom Mountain Road. Briefly, I think everybody's pretty much aware of the Sodom Mountain Road issue. It was a county road. It's been closed. It was gated. We agreed that keys would be given out to the Town of Southwick and Granville and the landowners that, so they would have access to that abandoned road. And the Town of Granville is, sent us a nice letter about they were having issues with people up on the road that shouldn't be on the road. And now they're trying to tighten the enforcement of that. Does everybody read the letter and understands it?
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Steinhardt?
I have, I did follow up with our police chief to make sure that they double-checked our gate, which is located several hundred feet off of the South Loomis part that, where that road goes. So there's gates on both ends to make sure no one tries to go up there. I actually went up there like 28 to 29 years ago with Minio Benetti in his Jeep, and the road's impassable now. It's gotten worse. I don't know, Randy, if you've been able to go up there at all, but.
I have not, but I know it is. You're not driving a vehicle up there. Even an ATV is gonna have issues getting up that road.
Right, so I just wanna make sure that our police and fire not only have keys to the gate up on the Grandville side, but we have keys to outside, even if it means we have to rekey it and put new locks and make sure the abutters, Public Safety Agencies in their community, Public Safety Agencies get it too. The police chief is following up on that.
Do we have similar signage to what Granville's putting up now on their end?
I have no idea. I need to look at it. I asked the safety officer to look at it.
Okay.
I think our side's a little different. We're not as, it's not as, you gotta find it, you know what I mean?
You gotta find it, and you'd have to pass a house too that's right down at the end, so.
Ours doesn't, doesn't jump out at you like, yep.
Most people think it's a driveway to that house.
But it does still show up on Google Maps, because I know a couple of times I've put in GPS for something, and it says to turn left on, on that road. I'm like, I travel that quite enough to know that there's no road there, but every now and then it comes up.
Well, maybe we should make sure that we have the proper signage.
I will double-check with the safety officer, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
It's opposite Klaus Anderson, right? Or was opposite Klaus Anderson, correct?
What's that?
It was opposite Klaus Anderson, correct? Off South Loomis?
Close.
Close, right.
Yeah, I don't think it's exactly perpendicular to it, so.
Gotcha.
Very close. Uh, next, we had a request from the Southwick Public Library to have a YouTube channel. Has everybody had an opportunity to read that letter?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I mean, we've approved everything else for him. I think this is an excellent situation for them to expand. So I'd accept the motion for that.
Doug Mogulyn will make that motion.
Joe Didi was second, as long as Russ Fox is the first reader on the YouTube channel. That'd be nice. You could do a thing for the kids. So elections are, Russ.
Blue moon, or I don't know. That was one of the last ones. All right, a motion was made and seconded. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Uh, next, we need to authorize the chairperson to sign a DLT agreement with Pioneer Valley Planning for the Hampden, Hampshire Canal for Historical Study. This will be a joint study. I think everybody's had an opportunity to read the letter. I'm sure that Lee Hambird will be involved in our historical commission. And they'll be working with a grant, what was it, Carl? $15,000?
Yes, sir, it's $15,000, and it's for six communities: Northampton, Easthampton, Southampton, Westfield, Russell, and Southwick. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a great document when it's done, because it's gonna be very, it's gonna help us with a lot of knowledge and history.
And what's great is we've got, what, Randy, two signs up now in Southwick about the canal, the cross?
Eting Hills Road and the other on South Longiron Road.
Okay, I need a motion?
Doug Mogulyn will make that motion.
Joe Didi, second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Okay, next, motion passes, unanimous. Acknowledged payables warrant number 2028B dated 5/1/2020 in the amount of $79,184.31. Acknowledged payables warrant number 2027B dated 5/4/2020 in the amount of $2,508,980.29. I now need a motion to accept the open session minutes dated 4/28/2020.
Doug Mogulyn makes that motion.
Joe Didi, second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
It's unanimous, it passes. I need a motion to accept the work session minutes dated 4/29/2020.
Doug Mogulyn will make that motion as well.
Joe Didi, second.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
It passes. All right, dates to remember. Special election for State Senator is gonna be on Tuesday, May 19th. That'll be the day after the good Governor hopefully is gonna let us start to open up a little bit more. Local elections are slated for June, Tuesday, June 9th. And then we'll have our special and annual town meeting the following Tuesday on June 16th. And we have to determine, once the Finance Committee gets through with their budget discussions, a joint session with the Finance Committee. So Carl, you wanna keep us abreast of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It's my understanding they had a meeting last evening, and they're going to have another one tomorrow to try and finish the line item budget review portion of the budget.
Okay.
So if they're able to accomplish that, then we could look at next Tuesday for a 5:30 start as a work session.
Doug, does that work for you?
Uh, that's the 12th, right? Possibly, yes. I think, I think we have another commitment that night, Russ, with CRC at 7:00.
Okay, we'll double-check.
We could certainly move it to Monday then if we had to, but it's gonna, it's gonna be cutting it close because we would have to post on Thursday to have a meeting on Monday.
Where are we going?
And you can't meet the following Tuesday, the 19th, because that's the election.
Correct.
And we don't need to finish the budget document because it's gonna have to, that line item document becomes, and alone, warrant article, and of course, we are working on the warrant articles, and hopefully we'll be further ahead after the Community Preservation Committee meets tomorrow night and finalizes all the applications before that board, some of which are housekeeping ones and some of which are specific projects under general unreserved, historical, or open space and recreation. So those, you know, now we're getting into the tight time of putting the flags in the warrant and then the housekeeping and warrant too.
Correct, but I think that the reconciliation meeting, or whatever we're gonna call it, between Finance and Select Board is not gonna be an hour. There was, there's major areas of stuff that needs to go back over again, I think. I don't think it's gonna get done in one hour, just so you know.
All right, why don't we do it this way? Carl, Doug, and Joe, I forgot, your back opened up now too, so why don't you kind of coordinate, throw out a couple of different dates, see what works? I'm still very flexible.
I'm flexible too. It's all, Doug, whatever works for you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, if the Tuesday, the 12th isn't gonna work, we could just do it Wednesday, like we did ours. We could do it Wednesday, the 13th.
That'd be fine too.
Why don't you work that out with Doug?
All right, perfect.
Okay? All right, we're going to old business. The first thing is Southwick Fire Department Station Project Bid Recommendations. We've already taken care of that, haven't we, Carl?
Uh, no, you, you had elected to hold off on the award of that. I think you wanted to speak with the Finance Committee because the awarding of that would be subject to town meeting appropriation and a borrowing authorization.
All right, so we're gonna hold off till we.
So you have the monetary, you, you know, you got two issues here. You have your, your role to award a bid and then eventually sign a contract, but before you activate a contract, you have to have an appropriation in hand because the town accountant has to certify that contract, has the dollars to fund it.
Okay, so we will, when we meet with the Finance Committee, we'll make that part of that discussion.
Right, no different than last year when we, when we went forward with the design money for the 300 to do all the bidding and design that has brought us to this point.
There you go. Okay, next thing, Mass DOT Congammon Road. Randy, have we scheduled another meeting with them yet, or no?
No, I spoke with Sean Milligan two days ago. I asked him to send us some dates when we can hold our next meeting, so I'm waiting to hear back on that.
It's a little discouraging when I see some of the emails going back and forth on the, how the billing has been coming through late and we're being assessed interest charges because Commonwealth of Massachusetts, not, excuse me, Mass DOT can't seem to get their act together. Just, that's just an aside. I'll get off to soapbox. Next thing I have is DPW brush program in white goods. How's that working out, Joe?
It's working out fine. We did it this week. We had one gentleman that I think was abusing it quite a bit. We did an investigation, and we found out it was Mark Koenicki.
It was Mark?
Mr. Koenicki, we got him at the jail now. He's arrested. We're gonna process through the deal. Actually, he, it is funny because he had kind of a high volume of trips, and we ran the plate number, DPW, did through the sticker program. Koenicki, apparently the, the electric company came through like they did in town, left a mess in front of his place, so he cleaned it all up and brought it to the transfer station, or, I'm sorry, to TJ Barton Beach. I asked him if he could continue once we take it back over in town, and he agreed. And he did say he was all done. Something about his taxes went up on his property value, and he had to get back at somebody on that team somehow.
Well, number one, Joe, that's new growth. That was his decision to do that. And number two, I'm sure Randy could talk to the, the electric company about their tree trip and see how that, what they might be leaving in people's yards that necessitate them having to go and bring loads to the transfer station.
Well, my, my yard looks good, and they were here, so I'm not too sure it was all the electric company. But anyways, it's going fine. We were supposed to do it for two weeks. This would be the second week. Since the Governor bumped to the 18th, I would like to do one more week past our two, and then we'll finish it on the 18th, whether the Governor does or not, is my thoughts.
All right, any problem with that, Doug?
No, it seems like a good idea.
All right, we'll, we'll accept that recommendation.
And hopefully by then.
Randy, that's okay with you?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Hopefully by then, we have some kind of process at Town Hall so we can start looking at those metal goods again and get that ball rolling.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe, for all that you're doing on that.
Oh, no problem, pops.
All right, emergency rental assistance program. We're just gonna keep that kind of on hold and see what kind of interest there is in that. The only other thing I had under old business is we should be receiving the flag shortly that commemorate the ending of World War II, that Jean Thoreau is getting those two flags for us so that they can be placed at the Veterans Memorial and at the center of town, and one at the Veterans Flag at the New Cemetery. Any other old business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, let's see. No, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mogulyn, old business?
Uh, the only old business I think I have is the, I think I mentioned it earlier, is that one of us is committed to going to CRC next Tuesday. I'll go if, if, if that's your pleasure for next Tuesday at 7:00. It's a virtual meeting. It's a virtual meeting.
Was, was, was that originally in April, and it was pushed back?
Yeah, I think it got pushed. I, dude, I've lost all track of time. It was sometime this year.
Yeah, I just don't remember us getting a notice about them pushing that meeting back.
She, she texted me today about the name.
Well, that's why we don't know then.
Not why I'm bringing it up now.
Some people are on the good list, some people are.
I'm on the bad list. She texted me. I get it.
All right, we'll, we'll work that out.
Doug's going, they invited him.
Either way, it's up to the pleasure of the Chair.
All right, Mr. Didi, old business?
Nope.
Okay, we're moving to new business. Uh, let's see. The only thing I had under new business is my conversations with our moderator, Mr. Putnam. We'd like to get that group together to plan for the special and annual town meeting. We suggested to him that we'd start that after the May 19th election because that was taken a top priority, but we, he did wanna get covers for the microphone, disposable covers for those, so we have placed that order. Joe, I know you worked very.
Well, the, we did go on to try to follow up on that placement to Amazon that he had given us.
Yep.
They were not available, so we are, reached out to him to look for other vendors for the location of those types of covers.
Okay. Joe, I know you worked with Jim, so I'd like, if you have the time, to work with him after May 19th?
Yep, whatever you need.
And. And uh Chief Bishop and Carl and uh Randy and everybody, the same group. Uh, new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, Mr. Fox, I think you also need to work, make sure that Dennis has this set up that we can broadcast that town meeting cuz I think you're still gonna have a short it'll be less people than usual that are gonna come out for that.
All right, let's get Dennis uh part of that too.
Yep.
All right, new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Um, I just, obviously, I'm not sure if you guys listened to the scanner or the traffic this weekend through public safety agencies, but obviously police and fire have been extremely busy these past couple of weeks along with public works and everybody's doing a great job and we oughta make note of that. I mean, we have a lot of people in our building doing, carrying their functions out, but the uh, a lot of things were going on in town this past weekend and the, the radio was hopping, so uh kudos to the uh public safety and public works departments.
Good. Mr. Mogul, new business?
Um, have we discussed anything about Memorial Day?
The only thing I remember is uh a member of the American Legion because they're in charge of Memorial Day activities was trying to float some idea of having a symbolic uh meeting at the uh Town Green, but I have not heard anything more.
I, it was, yeah, I, I, we all, we all had something like that. It was, they were gonna limit it to the ten people. So they're gonna be, they were gonna figure out who those ten people could be. And then Doug just wanted to make sure that when that happened, we would have Dennis Clark film it from a distance.
Okay. Can you reach out to the uh commander of the American Legion? And see if they're still planning to do that, if we can be of any assistance and also coordinate with the Dennis as far as filming?
Sure, you want me to do it or Doug? Who are you referring to, Mr. Chairman?
I was referring to you.
Okay, sure.
I just think we should get in front of it because I don't want anybody to start putting anything out there that there's gonna be a parade or something like that. It's, that's only a week after the lifting of the order and we don't know what that's gonna look like yet.
Right.
Just say it's someone's birthday and they're gonna be on that corner and we'll have a parade. Oh, did I say that out loud? I'm sorry.
All right, uh, any other new business, Mr. Mogul?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. DeeDee, new business?
No.
All right, uh, Randy, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
You wanna grab public comments while you're at it?
Oh, I apologize. I uh passed that over and I'll give that opportunity to anybody now that would uh like to make a statement to the select board. This would be your opportunity under public comments. If you'd like to make a statement, I'd please ask you to state your name and address. Is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment at this time? Hi, well, I got a hand up, Celeste.
Celeste Jacques, twenty-two, dear Ron. If the microphone cover thing doesn't work out, you can use a Bluetooth speaker. I haven't really worked on the technology, but I'm sure you guys have, probably have IT people. You can actually connect your phone to a Bluetooth speaker. So at least this way you guys could use that instead of sharing the microphone among you guys. You know what I'm saying?
If you have any information on that, by all means, send me
I, I was just playing with my apps on my phone and it says you can hook your app up to a Bluetooth speaker and use that on your phone, so it might be something worth looking into if you can't get the disposable. At least this way, you guys can use it. So you're not passing the microphone around to each of you guys.
All right, very good. Thank you, Celeste. But I did enjoy when Mr. DeeDee was running around at the special town meeting and disinfecting it every time I touched it.
It worked. Yeah. I actually got a contact for those of you, if you guys don't get anywhere. I got a guy that might specialize in those.
Really, send, send it to me.
I can't send you its information, but I'll look into it for you.
Got a guy.
That guy or the other guy?
He deals in things that, you know.
All right, with that, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
With that, Doug Mogul will make that motion.
Joe DeeDee, second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe DeeDee, aye.
Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
You as well.